Okay, welcome to the study session and it's August eighth. And today we're gonna be reviewing some information that will help us be prepared for the upcoming Truth in Taxation meeting. We'll start with a quick roll call because we're recording. Tom Hanson, board member.
Kim Dickerson, board member.
Marion B. Allen, board member.
Corey Holmes, board member.
Tyler Bluth, board member.
Keith Johansson, business administrator.
Paul Swat, superintendent.
Okay, you guys can see the agenda. Adam, one, two, three, and then we will take any questions that the group has during those items. Let's start with number one, the proposed property tax rate increase. And I think what the purpose of this meeting today is to answer questions that the board has about what the increase rate is going to, how we can continue to be prepared to answer any questions that the community has for us about that, the rates that we've decided to hold, and really just have a good, open discussion so people can understand the information and then be able to communicate it out to the constituents. Anything that anybody wants to add to that? Sounds good? Okay. So, I'm gonna turn the time to Keith and let Keith give us just a high level of where we are on the proposed rates, and how much revenue that will generate.
Okay.
And then the line items that we have identified that that, those funds will be going to.
Right.
I think we'll be talking specifically about the M and L fund and the capital fund.
Right. So, you, we've been at this now for quite a while, so we all know that we were planning on holding a Truth in Taxation hearing this year. As we built the budget, we were planning on holding a Truth in Taxation hearing this year. We've been talking about this since March after the legislative session ended, and so we were, we're gonna accomplish a few things here in this Truth in Taxation hearing. The first, and you know, is switching the debt service levy, taking, the only thing that will be left to be paid from the debt service levy is the bond that built Tempenogus Middle School, Daniels Canyon Elementary, and the pool. And that's just over four million a year. And so, it's been, it's been up at like, almost thirteen million, we're dropping it to four. And, and the nine million dollar diff- sorry. I thought he had a bloody nose. So, we're dropping the debt service from thirteen to four, 'cause like I say, all it has left to pay is the bond that we passed in twenty sixteen, I believe it is. And the nine million dollars that is gonna make the final bond payment this year for the Wasatch High School that was built in two thousand eight and nine, that final payment will be made this year out of the capital fund rather than the debt service fund. And so, that switch is gonna, and then, and then going forward from this year, that nine million dollars is gonna make the lease payments on the lease revenue bonds for the new high school. So, that's one thing we're gonna accomplish. The next thing, you know, we've always talked about holding, holding the rates steady, and we built a budget on the concept that we're gonna hold the rates steady. And that's how, you know, when we were talking about negotiations back in April, May, and early June, and we were doing all these different scenarios, and you guys had asked me, can we do that, are we comfortable with that? And a couple of the scenarios were above what I was comfortable with, and I said so. But, you know, we, we did give some awfully good raises to all three groups, all four groups. And we, and then the assessments came in, and it was, you know, quite a bit of growth, more than we had anticipated. And so, it's holding, holding the bonds steady, or holding the rates steady, excuse me, is gonna generate, in the, in the general fund, seven point seven million dollars. And in the capital fund, it's gonna generate six point three million dollars. It's a real simple discussion on the capital side, because the six point three million dollars we've discussed over the past few months is gonna go towards future school sites and future school buildings. We're hoping to be able to build an elementary school, for instance, in the Jordanell Basin without having to bond. We're hoping to build an elementary school at Sawmill someday without having to bond. That would be a, that'd be a game changer. And think about all the interest that that is going to save, the taxpayers of this valley. I mean, 'cause interest is a, you know, rates are still high, and it would save millions of dollars if we could ever put that plan into place. There are districts who are doing that right now.
I might also add to that discussion, we, we know that we kinda lost our, our contract on the piece of ground in Midway that we envisioned a new Daniels Canyon-like school in Midway at some point. That all, that all went away. That, that, that contract basically rendered itself vulcanoid after the bond failed. And we've been working with the, with the church to try and re-enter into talks to move forward with buying that land, and we were kinda getting nowhere, and we're, we're happy to report that in our negotiations with them, as it relates to a seminary site at the new high school, we've asked them to really consider selling us that piece of Midway. It's kinda the same part of that negotiation, and they have come back last week and told us that they would, they would go ahead and do that. So, it certainly won't be at the, at the price that was negotiated in the last contract. They'll have to be a new appraisal. But we're, we're now able to move forward with buying that, what's, what's now, they've even, they've even added just a little bit to it, and they've, they've come up, so it'll be twelve acres. And it'll be just like it was before, where there'll be a road that leaves Mitchie Lane and goes back. The first, right out on Mitchie Lane will be a church house, and behind the church house will be a twelve acre elementary site.
That's, that's huge.
That's a big deal.
The residents of Midway will thank us one day.
Yes, they will.
And that, and that, you know, I, who knows when that will happen, but I think it would be in our, it would be as far as the board acting as good stewards for the future to get that piece of ground tied up as we have that opportunity. 'Cause I think in the future, to buy twelve acres anywhere in Midway or the vicinity is gonna be really difficult.
So, what would our plan be there to purchase that property, build an elementary school, and then do what with Midway?
So, our, our plan would be to, to build a new elementary school that's similar to our other models. And then we would, we would, we would sell the site, either with the, the old site with this, with this school on it, or we would tear it down and sell the site.
Does the church still, are they still interested in purchasing that?
No, we don't wanna get involved in anything that's that complex, or that's, we, we would just, we would not wanna sell that property until the new school was built. And once the new school was built, then we would sell it.
But originally, they had like first right of refusal.
So, that's, that's, that's gone. That's null and void, and there were, there were some brethren that came up to the site and said, oh, we sure hate to lose this piece of property here in Midway, we love Midway so much, and Midway's special, and
Halfway to heaven.
And then, and we were told that that kinda, that dynamic has gone away.
So, the land swap deal like we had on the original bond is no longer an option to talk.
Okay. And we're okay with that, because it gives us the time we need to plan and build the elementary school. And then we turn around when that's finished, and we, we assume that we'll at least get the same amount per acre on that piece that we're gonna sell as, as that we'll be paying for the piece that we'll buy from.
What is our, what is our school site set on right now?
About nine acres.
It's actually down to about eight, because we had to give up some for Mitchie Lane. But we do have, yeah, that's true, we do have the road, but it's on the north side.
We are gonna pick that road up as part of the property.
But the look on the deal looks better, too, that we're not swapping things with the church.
Yeah, and we, and I also think that to buy a piece of property is a good investment. Not that we're an investment group, but if we're gonna
We have to build schools.
If we're gonna have to build a school in Midway in the next decade, this, this group, this board, has had an interest in preparing for a site in Midway. I know it's something that I've been
No, we were looking at the sewer plant piece.
Yeah, I've been trying to do, and it'd be nice to get a piece of property bought in Midway in the next couple of years.
I, I may have missed some of this, but when is it, and I don't know if you've even said this, when is it anticipated that we'd have to pay for this property? Next year?
Whenever we get it negotiated, yeah.
They, they would wanna, I mean, we don't have to close on them on the same day, but I think it would be within relatively short period of time, them, them purchasing the acre at the, at the school site, and then we would turn around and purchase that from them, somewhere in the same vicinity.
You said they've added to it, what do you mean by that?
Well, we were, they, they, they had a different configuration where it was, it was ten acres, and we were having a little trouble getting, we were trying to get a regulation soccer field on the site for the, for the people of Midway. And so, they, we had asked if they, if there was any way that they could just scoot that line down a little bit, it would help us with our playground and our, and our grass.
So, let's, let's stick to the six point three. So, the six point three, if I heard you, would go towards building an elementary school in Sawmill.
Eventually.
Eventually. Purchasing a piece of property in Midway.
We're also talk, looking, we're still looking at that centerpiece.
Center Creek.
Center Creek piece, sorry.
Buying a piece of property in Center Creek, Center Creek Road and thirty-six.
Twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four. And then the third piece is potentially a smaller community school on the Jordanell property.
And I, you know,
And we do own ten acres up there already.
I think
For ten more years.
Ten more years.
And then, and then we lose it.
Board member Dickerson can speak to that a little bit. I, I think we're getting more and more pressure from your constituents up there that they would like to see a school. I think that, the last thing that I heard, and I, and I can sympathize with this, is, is there's a group of parents up there that actually feel like if there was a neighborhood school, that more families would move there, would choose to move there. Right now, in the Jordanell Basin, they've either gotta come down here, some of them are choosing to go to South Summit, some of them are choosing to go to Park City. And if they had a, if they had a neighborhood school in the Jordanell Basin, they feel like it would draw more families instead of
So, what do you, what do you mean by Jordanell Basin? Is that, is that Swanson property up there, or down, where's, where's the site?
So, the site, the site is right by the lake. Right by the State Park and at the Mayflower.
And a great school would fill that void for them, they think?
Well, that's your neighborhood school concept, where they're, they're willing to travel a little more for a high school or a middle school. But the, the elementary concept around the country, and certainly here, has been your elementary school is your neighborhood school.
So, that would service what we have currently up on the hill of where Mayflower is, new resorts being built, all that area. That, that would filter down to a school, and then, but anywhere from us north to alleviate some of the heat on J.R. Spence, such as Todd Hollow that we
Todd Hollow, anywhere over towards Browns Canyon.
How big of a school you talking?
I, my, just off the top of my head, I'd say maybe half the size of our normal schools.
And if you don't build it, what happens after ten years?
Well, the land goes back.
It reverts to the donor.
Go back.
So
They gave us forty years, and it's been thirty.
Wow, we didn't get something.
So, I can, I can see their argument, but what, what's, how many kids are we pulling in from that area? And with the prices, the price of housing up there, do you think that's realistic that they would be able to get more kids in that area? I mean, I'm not against, I'm just
No, I, your message to me has always been that you're, you're in favor of moving forward with something like that, but I don't
It's a smaller school.
I, I, I mean, we can make them wait it out until they have, I, you know, I, I don't know.
Do we know how many kids are coming there?
I don't, I haven't checked this year from Adam, but in previous years, we've had at least a hundred kids for elementary on the, on the Todd Hollow box. That's just that one neighborhood. So, if we count other kids that are going to the other districts, I'd, I imagine a small elementary school would
Well, in the
Would quickly fill up in the next condition.
The Mayflower, even the Mayflower, the, the Mida project that's under the Mida, there's, there's, there's several homes in that development, and there's, there's some that are pegged for, for people that will work at Mayflower Mountain. And there are others, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna misquote, but what I was told not too long ago is we're, we're talking about single-family dwellings in like the thousands.
Well, I'm, I'm meeting with them, I've actually asked Corey to come with me, but the end of this month, with that community, with the Jordanell community, so.
Where do, where are you, where in the meeting, you said the Jordanell community, where is it?
Luke put, is putting together just a county, like Luke, Carl McMillan, I'm gonna be there, and then Chris Bear.
But where?
Oh, at their clubhouse up there.
Which is?
At the Jordanell.
At the Jordan clubhouse, okay.
Yeah, up there.
At the lake.
And so, it's whoever, you know, Jordanell community members that want to come and just ask questions or whatever. Luke put it together, said, do you wanna come? I said, yeah. So, anyway, it, you know, maybe I'll just try to get some feedback on what they think, like, if they really think kids are gonna be moving in and what they want. So, that's another conversation.
Yeah, are they wanting, are they wanting, they're starting to talk about it.
This has been
Or they want K through five, do they want K through eight?
Well, well, we, this, this is, I mean, we haven't, we haven't given that much attention to detail, to any of this stuff yet. We just know
This is out there, right?
That, that, that we continue to hear, I mean, Kim took me up there on a ride with one of the parents, and, and I know, I know we've heard their steady stream of, um, what are your plans? When are you gonna build? And so, I, I think it's definitely on our radar.
Okay. I have a question, do we really think, like, what, what's our capacity like at Daniels and Old Mill? I know, last year, you know, it was pretty full. Is enrollment staying, is it pretty leveled right now, do you think? Like, do we, do, are we thinking we really need that school at Sawmill? What are we thinking?
Let's refer back to our demographic stuff that we went over. I mean, what, what did they tell us?
I don't, I, I think our conversation, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna misinterpret our conversation. Our conversation is, is based on, and from my point of view, it's based on the vision for the future
Right.
And where we're headed.
So, that's my question.
And do we, do we, are we, are we under pressure to immediately build a new elementary school? And, and the answer's no. Do we see a need coming in the near future?
Yes.
And I, I think the answer's yes. I think the, I think the board would be irresponsible to think that we're, that we're just, that we, that we can't continue to plan for new space for children.
That kinda leads to a question I had, 'cause we were looking at boundaries for elementaries to kinda adjust things. Are we even gonna do that? Are we still looking to do that for elementary boundaries, or is that something?
You wouldn't wanna do it this year. It's August.
Well, no, not this year. I'm saying like, to make it so that we have more time to save up if we're gonna be putting this much money in capital.
It would take, it would take a few, a couple, you know, four years to save up enough to build an elementary. This isn't next
So, we'll be adjusting boundaries.
Yeah.
That's our, our future school project told us
That's why I thought, I thought we were doing it, and then, yeah.
I mean, you should adjust boundaries and, and build a new elementary school. And step one was the high school, step two was adjust the boundaries to buy time, and step three was build a new elementary school, if I can remember that correctly.
Yep.
You're right.
But yes, to your point, we probably should have adjusted boundaries this summer. I don't think anybody, um, thought it was immediate.
Yeah.
I mean, does it happen next year yet? They know that Old Mill's full, JR's full.
Old Mill and JR is where the, it's where we're full, the schools are full.
Well, and by next year, Daniels Canyon, that whole massive development on Daniel Road
Daniels can be crazy.
Will be sold out.
Yep.
Where's Midway now?
So, there.
We can gear up, we can gear up for a boundary change right before, you know, you
Where are you gonna put people?
Tell us, Eric, how, how we do that again, or remember, it's been a second since we've done that.
It's so much fun.
But it makes it so we have more time.
The timeline for that is
If you're just asking my opinion, I think a good time to do that would be in preparation for the high school, since currently right now, you have your elementaries feeding into middle schools, which then feed into the high schools. And so, when that's ready to do that, that would be, in my opinion, an okay time to do that. So, that's about three years out. Or you would be aligning that to better place kids in those high schools, and that'd be a good time to do it for your elementaries, based on where they're full, Midway being full, JR and Old Mill. And we also buy in time to see some of these new developments that have high potential for families to move in, and we can see how much, how many kids we're getting in those areas.
Okay. So, if I understand correctly, we wouldn't do anything with boundaries for at least three years?
Or would we do it in two?
Eric just gave a suggestion.
Okay.
It's up for conversation.
Right, right, but I mean, that's what you're suggesting, right?
Yeah.
As we prepped for that.
Looking, looking at that, I mean, unless something, and obviously every year something changes, we find out a lot every October one about where those shifts happen with kids. But based on last year's numbers, we could see that our elementaries, though those ones are full, they're making do with the space that they have, and Stephanie can speak to that better than I can. But I think that we could last for a little bit. But we have done some portables and those type things that, that could help us out in that interim time also.
And we have space in Daniels Canyon and Heber Valley.
Just a bit.
Just enough to
Ship those people from Midway to
Heber Valley. Be good for everybody. Okay, that's the capital. Six point three million, hold the rate.
That's what it goes to, that's what we, our understanding of where that money is going to.
Four projects.
And, and we have
Go ahead.
No.
Well, I'm just gonna say, I think the primary purpose of the, I, all of these things are factors. And they're, they're things that we, that we would like to make sure was pointed in the right direction. But I think the primary purpose, when we first had this conversation as a board, was the fact that we wanted to pay cash for the next elementary school. And like Keith said, that might be four or five years away. When we get to that point, we're, I mean, we're gonna be talking at least in the twenty-five, thirty million dollar range.
Yeah.
And so, in order, the, the school districts around the state that are trying to switch over to paying cash, at least for elementary schools, are doing Truth in Taxation hearings this year. And we know there's about fifty percent of the school districts that are engaged in Truth in Taxation. And we know specifically about two or three of those districts that are, that are trying to do that, that are trying to switch some of their, their debt services that runs out over on, over to the capital levy. St. George being the one we know the most about, because we've collaborated with them on this process. And, so I, I don't wanna lose sight of the, the real plan with the capital piece was to start saving enough money to pay somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five million dollars cash for a new elementary school.
Well, and I think going with that, we need to, somehow, we need a message of this, that if, if this is what we choose to do, give us a ballpark of how much we're saving on interest. If we, instead of doing a twenty-year or thirty-year GO bond, or a twenty or thirty-year lease revenue, I mean, we can, we can only predict, it's like a ballpark. But it's, well, this school, if we buy it with a bond, will cost twice as much. If we can save up and save our money and do the best we can, we're trying to save this much to the taxpayer. So, I think that needs to be accentuated if this is the route we choose. Because if it's to save money in the future, it's not just pay cash, it's, we're paying cash to save this much, millions to the taxpayers in interest. Something along those lines, that's just my thought, what do you guys think?
No, it's a good point.
And did we figure out a way, I don't know if this is possible, I know we kinda might have had a discussion on this, um, of saying, like, I don't know if we can do this, like earmarking that money for the school, you know, for the future. Like, what if a future board, like, we know what we wanna do?
Cause that was, we just kinda went through is that, was that my funding will be, and that, that's where I was unclear, Kim come out of the meeting last time,
Yeah.
Is what, what is this money going for?
Right.
But, you know, exactly right.
With a future board
But if we're earmarking it for that, there's purposes, that, isn't that, not what you just did?
Future board can do whatever they want.
True.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't bind them.
All we can do is put the money
This is our internal plan with the money.
All the money can do is put the money in the capital fund.
And then a future board can come and do what they want, not that
We would hope that they would adhere to the plan, that you just got it for twenty years.
Previous point.
But they don't have to.
But they, are these legally bound and all? I don't think anybody who does this job is looking to go rogue.
But how nice would it be to have a, get to a board and say, hey, those guys had some foresight to give us some funds to be able to do this? So, we're, we're like passing it on, so.
And it, it gives them a chance to either go and bond, and do their best in trying to get a bond pass for an elementary school.
God bless them.
God bless them. Or use the money that's in the capital fund to build the school. But you're definitely gonna save tens of millions of dollars in interest. We can run the numbers.
I just punched this in. If you, if you borrowed thirty million at four and a quarter over twenty years, that, it would, you'd, you'd have to pay about forty-five million back.
Thirty million at four and a quarter.
So, fifty percent of the building cost.
So, fifteen million.
Yeah.
Tens of millions.
Save them.
So, save fifteen million.
I think four and a quarter's pretty close to what bond rates are doing right now.
I just, yeah, I just, I mean, we can only guess.
Okay.
That's capital.
That's capital.
So, we have a
Really quick, can I just ask one thing on that? So, six point three is holding the rate, anything less than that just lowers, like, that's where we can float or not float. But six point three is what we would do with the way it's set now to hold the rate. That, okay, I'm just clarifying that out loud.
Hold the rate as is.
As is, as noticed.
Revenue is six point three million.
It'd be six point three. Anything lower than that, it would just take longer to build it.
Go ahead.
You have an eyebrow?
Was that the pen's fault? Or was that, or was that user error?
No, that was the pen's fault.
I'm sorry that happened.
But I had that all over my face.
Oh, you had it on?
Yes.
Anyway, all right.
There's a Seinfeld episode about that. Mr. Pitt.
All right, I mean, we're
Well, then, the one thing I'm just gonna add, I think that we've had these conversations. I'm just, I'm talking about long-term, I'm not saying there's a big rush, but I do, I also think that in our long-term capital planning, we need to, we need to consider a professional development center in this district. Right now, we use these two rooms over here, and, and I would, I would say we're pretty close to capacity, and, and I think there, I think there should be, on the long-term vision for capital, there should be a plan to either add on to this building and create additional professional development space. And, and, you know, at that time, you might even look at a little larger boardroom, and we anticipate it sometime in the not-so-distant future. We anticipated sometime in the not-so-distant future, if we, if we push to that ten thousand student threshold, we'll, we'll have seven board members instead of five. And, uh, so as, as, as your, as your superintendent and your advisor, I would, I would think that on our long-term plan, we should have something about. Some additional, the, the other thing, if you've been to the third floor lately, there's one room up there with, how many people in it, Todd?
Five.
Five people and we're. I would, I would propose, we need to start thinking about adding on to this district office.
Good.
Okay, so, trying to get ready for this meeting, we, um, prepared a little spreadsheet now that we're gonna talk about the general fund. Um, so, actually Stacy, go, go back to the top if you would for just a second. So there, we've talked about the, the nine million dollars moving from debt service to, uh, the capital. These are the projects and sites that we're talking about. Um, that we've just discussed on the capital side. Now, um, now we talk about the general fund and as I said a while ago, you know, we, as we prepared the budget for this year. We, we anticipated holding the rates and, and generating what additional revenue we could in order to give. The raises that we gave and, and, uh, in order to fund some of these positions. And so this is just a list of, of things that. That that money, that holding the rates steady is going to pay for in this year's budget. Um, there's one item that is not in this year's budget, right there in the middle, but we'll get there. Um. The, the first item there is our preschool program. We, over the. Over the years that I've, I've worked with various school boards, um, we've, board members have always come in with, or some board members have come in with. A project, something that they wanted to accomplish. So one year we added, you know, we were the first in the state to have counselors at the elementary schools. We held a truth and taxation hearing to make that happen. We added SROs at every building and we held a truth and taxation hearing to re- generate the revenue for that. We added PE specialists. That was your dad's pet.
That his baby?
Project. That was his baby. He wanted, uh, to get the kids out, moving around a little bit more. And, uh. And we held a truth and taxation hearing to pay for PE specialists at the schools. Um, now we've added a, a two million dollar project, or a two million dollar program, I should say, and that's the, the preschool program. Uh, with no funding, um, at first, but then, um, Tara Boswell, to her credit, has, has got us. Uh, about a sixty, or a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to, to help pay for the preschool program. And so that leaves. The M and O budget on the hook for the difference between the two million dollar expense and the sixty, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Which, by the way, you know, you, you can't bank on a grant for very long. Um, you, you don't know how long that's gonna be there, although. She's, she and Eric have worked on this for a long time and it seems pretty darn stable at the moment. Um, so anyway, that. That program never, we, we never held a truth and taxation hearing or anything to try to generate the funds for that program. We just kinda. You know, whittled away at, at other projects or class sizes or whatever it took to get that preschool program up and going and, and. I'm sure it's a, you know, we're gonna start seeing some great results as a result of that program. It's, it's worth it. Okay. Um, we also, you know, inflation the last few years have eaten about six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in increased utilities and gas prices. Um, we're a pretty big deal, uh, when it comes to, I mean, Heber Light and Power, we gotta be their biggest customer by, by leaps and bounds. Uh, Rocky, or not Rocky Mountain Power, but he, anyway, you can see that, you know, we, we've never held a truth and taxation hearing to try to generate, to try to. Pay for the in, the increase in those utility costs. We've always bought one bus. We used to buy two buses and then we whittled it down to one. Now, you know. Chances are this year we're gonna go to two. Um, that's, that's an additional almost two hundred thousand dollars. In our negotiations, um, we, we used two point four million dollars in, um. Proceeds from, from this, this truth and taxation hearing to, to give the raises that we gave. Um, and we were.
Keith, stop right there. Do we have to do a truth and taxation to give those raises for twenty twenty-four?
Yes. We, that was, that was the plan all along.
Okay. Uh, there was some discussion that the, the four million dollars that we're already getting, that, that doesn't cover the raises.
Doesn't cover all of it, no.
Okay.
The four point eight in new growth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and we were some of the, we were one of the first districts to, to, at least in our area. I mean, there were. Some of the Wausatch Front districts that settled earlier than we did, but.
Hold on Keith, sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. I just wanna back up to his point. Cause it was four point eight in new growth alone. And so. That's four point eight. So that's covered, right?
That's a coincidence.
Oh.
That, it's not the same four point eight.
Help me out.
Where are you looking?
Two, two, four, twice.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty salary, twenty salary, twenty-four, twenty-five, two, two, you're different.
So the four point eight in new growth. What do you, I, I'm just sort of.
The, the four point eight in new growth is going to. With, with the additional amount of money that we were gonna generate by holding the raise still, was gonna in, be the money that we gave the raises with.
Okay.
Okay. Um. So that's already, you know, that, we, that's all in the, you know.
That's spent.
That's spent.
Yeah, it's gone. It's, it's already there.
It's gone.
It's in the contract.
It's gone. Um. We were one of the first ones in our area to settle and it, when we settled, um. Our neighbors to the north, both neighbors to the north gave massive raises to their teachers. So. That little survey that we're so proud of that we're up here, um, we're gonna be down a few notches. Um.
Where does that put us? Where do you think it'll put us?
I, I don't know.
Four, five, six.
Well, we just, we know.
Third or fourth?
We know that, uh, Park City and.
And South Summit.
South Summit have jumped over the top of us. And I, I think we just know that rather we're, you know. First, second, or third, whether we're, we're right in there or not. But tho- those are the ones that we compete with more than anybody now. And we didn't used to compete with South Summit. Nowadays, we do. And, uh, there's, there's, there's fluid teacher movement between our three districts at this point. And Sean could speak to that if you needed him to, um.
Right.
And then the other, the other thing, I think just moving forward, and so as Keith says, you know, that's already spent. That's the FY twenty-four, the FY twenty-five, we're, we're, we're trying to. Plan for, uh, another good raise. Um, Sean reports back to the directors group and others that, 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 that ten percent that went to classifieds, it's made a big difference. That we're, we had a much easier time hiring people than we have with that, with that built in. And I, and I think to keep. To keep that moving forward, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna want another big move with classifieds again next year. And especially after we've seen the results with, with, that's happened this year with, with, with aides especially and sweepers. I mean, we, we went, how, how many, how many spots down were we this year in our parent professionals with just unfilled spots?
Well, it was a constant turnover. We were five, six all year long. We fill one, somebody else quit. And the superintendent's right, the ten percent has changed the hiring for sure this year. We hired two maintenance guys, got good quality people. New custodians. I think we had like ten applicants where before we would go a month without any applicants. Our pool was shutting down constantly because we didn't have the lifecards to man it. We, with the ten percent and the changes there, we were getting. More applicants and we're not having to close the cooldown. So it's definitely changed the, the classified or the licensed professionals. Uh, hiring and who's applying for that. I talked to a lot of the principals today and said, how's the aide hiring going? And they said, much different than last year.
What's the timeline on the, the study that we're doing with South Summit and Park City?
So he's gonna get back to S A S I P. They're just finishing their, uh. I guess private sector component. He sent me an email the other day wanting to set a time where he could come and meet. I would think it's gonna be middle of September when they wanna come and do a presentation. Here's the sad news. After that has been completed, Park City and South Summit drastically changed their salary schedule. To the tune of like fifty percent in Park City. So it's gonna, I, I think it's taking longer because they are having to readjust.
Well, at least you'll be accurate when it finally shows up.
Well, we hope.
One question that I have about the salaries, Keith, is how do you estimate the benefit package? That's such a, a high note of our.
Yeah.
Of our compensation and, you know, one year it's up, one year it's down. I mean, what's the stability and how do we? How do we help forecast that pool that we're in?
Yeah.
And will it ever go away?
The only, um, the only variable is, is the insurance premiums. The, I mean, U R S is set. There, there were a few years prior to any of you coming on the board where the rate that we were paying for retirement was going up. One and a half to two percent a year. And it was, that was horrendous. Uh, it was, but, but it's been very stable. In fact, our, our rates. On those are dropping as, as more, as we hire more and more tier-two teachers. That rate's twenty percent instead of twenty-three. Or some, you know, that's rounding, but, um, so, you know, we, we just try to keep tabs with the insurance. How, how we're doing. The pool's doing great. It went through, it had a really bad year two years ago and that's why the, the premiums went up substant, I mean, it was twenty and a half percent or something. Last year. It went up, if I remember right, around three percent this year. So it's, it's doing great.
Goes up every year.
It's doing great. I, I think coming out of COVID, it was a shock to the system where people had put off so many. Uh, procedures during COVID. And then once, once people felt comfortable going back, uh, we just had a horrendous year. Uh, our fund balance in the pool was dropping like a stone and, and it was nerve-wracking to watch. But anyway, I, I think that's, that's, you know, better now as, you know, more, more stable now that things are back to normal after COVID.
Had a lot of teachers get total joints.
Yeah, yeah. Nobody was having anything done for about three years and then all of a sudden, everybody had everything done.
Yep.
But I think that's a huge part of it too. Like, we might not be number one, but our total compensation, like. Our health insurance is something I think that is massive and.
Well, that, that thing took, uh, that survey took, uh, benefits into consideration.
Call that into account.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the whole package.
Oh, that's the whole package.
Yeah, it was the whole package. It was salary plus benefits.
Not just salary.
But Park City makes, to be clear, Park City might pay more, but their employees pay a premium every month. South Summit pays more, but their employees pay a premium every month. Our, my understanding, we still do not charge our employees a premium.
Correct.
And that is huge.
It is.
The thing that Keith provides to you.
Yeah.
That's all balanced out. That's all taken into account.
So.
So there's a factor for salary, there's a factor for benefits.
Our benefits are definitely better, but superintendent tried, that's fact in the sheet. But our benefits are better than those two, for sure.
So Sean, will you talk about, you know, the teachers moving?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
This is the first year in a long time that we in August, I had two openings until yesterday. That's the first, just like. We lost, I don't wanna, I mean, three, four teachers in August to Park City. That's, that hadn't happened for a long time. We lost a couple to Soldier Hollow. We lost a couple to South Summit. And these were late hires. I chewed out the Soldier Hollow guy the other day and I said, quit hiring our teachers in August. If you wanna be good neighbors, just, you know, don't do that. Being a little facetious, but I was serious with him. And I haven't had that many openings and that much turnover with people leaving. And these are veteran teachers that have been with us for quite a while. Who were like, hey, I'm gonna go, I mean, ten thousand more and they left.
So it's overpaying. It's, the pay is what's enticing them.
Correct. I think they'll be back or they wanna come back. We may have to decide if we want them because the benefits are better, the environment's better, our culture's better. That's why I'm less opinion.
We get fall break off? We get fall break off?
Yeah, we do. Yeah. Have a better calendar. Yeah, have a better board.
I don't know about that.
Be sure to.
What about teachers driving up from the valleys?
We still have a fair number, especially our younger elementary clientele drive up for three or four years and that's. I think Todd and the people today, we hired, I think this was the largest group today. We had over sixty new teachers. That new teacher training. That's huge. Sixty. And I met with the two today that were brand new.
So say that again. We have currently in our district, what, what percent drive in?
So that's a hard question because it changes so much, but I would say we probably driving in here from somewhere. Thirty percent.
That only, thirty percent? We, we used to say thirty percent of our elementary. And it's a little lower in the secondary. I don't know if that's changed or not.
Still same. Time. Secondary is more stable population.
Tell you what, we're getting a lot of, just so you know, people that are moving here for a job, their husbands or somebody's getting a job somewhere. They've taught for a fair amount of time somewhere else and they're moving here and we're hiring them. So the cost of new teachers is, is more. Because they have more experience.
It's about time you admitted that, Sean. It's about time you admitted that.
Huh?
Because of their experience and.
Because of their experience and their education, they fall to the rear end of the salary schedule. So they're making eighty or ninety thousand instead of sixty.
There's a.
That leave.
Look, since this is a work session, I would bring up too, something that I think we need to begin talking about and. We might have to wait till Keith's fully out of the building so he doesn't feel fair.
Yeah. I'd appreciate that.
But, uh, there's this longstanding tradition in education and we don't really know why. It's just the way it worked out that. That when you switch districts, you give up some of your years of experience. And, uh, so you can, you can teach for, our, our policy right now, the board changed it a few years back. Um, they moved it from seven up to ten. And.
Used to be five.
I'm, okay, five, up to ten. My opinion is, especially to pick up some of the people that live here that, that just moved here, their husband moved here from Seattle. And they're used to making a hundred thousand dollars as a teacher and they move here and they find out that that's just not the case. I, and, and. And then when we do offer them a job, they've been looking at our salary schedule online and we inform them that they're only gonna get placed on step eleven. They're not happy about it and some of them turn around and walk out the door. And I, I think that it's, it's time for us to start the conversation. About just like every other industry out there. I can't think of another industry that penalizes you for moving and takes your years of experience.
That's what I was gonna say because there was, there, I am glad you're bringing this up because I was gonna ask you about this.
How did that happen? It's been that way forever.
Just, why?
We.
And it, and it's still that way. And if, and if our district changed our policy and just said, you know what?
We're not gonna do it.
In Wausatch County School District, you get credit for however many years you have. That would be a game changer. Talk to Sean about that.
Well, I would say we, I know of one person and I'm not gonna out them, but there was one person who has sixteen years of experience, wanted a job that was posted this summer. And Park City got her because she couldn't take the pay decrease from sixteen years to ten.
And, and they probably.
And that, eleven. But that's a. Eleven, but that's a, like, that's, those are the, those are the teachers you you wanna try and capture, they have experience, they're not gonna quit because it's.
But these are.
Really hard, so I'm glad we're talking about it.
It's a pretty big conversation and it would make my lives, I I wouldn't have.
Is that a state?
Sean, your life's already good.
All the districts used to be that way.
It would have cost. The reason, the reason Keith has always been opposed to it is because it would be a, there would be a price tag to it, there would be a good price tag attached to it.
What it would do for sure is like, people we hired two years ago, who had twenty years, didn't get it, but now all of a sudden you do. You'd have to have some sort of grand father or some sort of. Claws in there to get them something.
Yeah, it's time for.
Keith's like, I'm outta here guys, a couple more days.
So how many districts do it that way? In in Utah?
Everybody did it that way, um, I think.
It's slowly changing, it's slowly.
Yeah.
It's the new ploy.
Well, yeah, just Park City's.
Works in Utah, it's everywhere.
Park City's fifteen.
If a transfer within the state, does you don't lose yours, do you?
You don't lose your retirement.
You don't lose your retirement, you lose where you are on step and lane.
Where you get placed on the step and lane.
Even within the state?
Was that a motivation to get people to not leave?
I guess, I don't, I don't.
I'll tell you what happens is maybe somebody, we've had this. Somebody like, hey, I have an opportunity to go figure out if I wanna be a salesman, so they go be a salesman for a year and say, oh, I didn't like that. Oh, I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna lose nothing and I'm gonna go right back in the salary schedule at step twenty-five. It's like, wait a minute, you took a year off and went to try something, it didn't work, so now we're gonna put you back right in the same spot.
That's what.
That's kinda what the the thinking is why they didn't wanna do that. To keep them there, to keep people wanting to stay in the system. I think that there's a lot of that, I think on the other side, we've had people stay because they didn't wanna lose their years that they had here.
We're, we're in a, we're in a race for teachers, there's no, there's no question about it, we're.
So my question to Mary Ann is you have.
Yeah.
Park City puts everybody at fifteen, that's their base?
Well, so if you, let's say you teach, my my understanding is fifteen, right?
I don't know if there's a fifteen, the word on the street is they're giving their, giving years. So if you have eighteen, you get eighteen, Mary Ann has twenty-one, you get twenty-one.
Okay. So if you have eighteen.
Oh, they're they're matching, they're matching.
I think they get their years.
But some, some districts are still seven, we're at ten.
Sean? And what do we do?
We're at ten.
We put, we get ten, we put them on eleven.
Twenty years of experience, we put you on step eleven.
So like she had sixteen years of experience, she was going into her seventeen.
Of course she would.
But she went from seven, she wanted to be here, her kids are here, she lives here.
Fifteen minute drive.
And instead she's driving Park City because she couldn't afford that drop. So.
That's opened up now.
Oh, thank goodness.
As of yesterday.
Alright. Oh, are you gonna ask it? Well, I just, so general fund, this all adds up to eight-five. But we're generating seven point seven. Help us out.
Well, we're not, I mean, the. We'd have to drop that fiscal year twenty-five.
That's not.
Number down.
Okay.
Or we don't buy a bus.
Or we, yeah, or we, or we cut something else out.
Or we defund music.
We either, I mean. You're right, something, something has to come off that, something has to come off that list.
We'll just leave it at defund music.
You know, and if.
Just kidding everybody.
The next four items are already spent, um, you know, we hired two music positions.
Yeah.
We hired uh, two tech posi-, no. One tech position and two maintenance posi- And that includes custodial. Custodial two, so.
One additional maintenance.
And one custodial.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, they're lumped together, so anyway, we hired three positions there. Um, we added. Several posi-, not several, but a few positions at the high school. Um, to handle the growth at the high school and then. Midway got a new fifth grade teacher and and there's, there's some growth at the elementary schools. And then we hired a new uh, school psychologist. And behavioral.
Like.
What's that, aide, it's an aide position, behavioral something or other.
A B A.
How are we doing on?
The other.
Oh yeah.
Anyway.
Or which school, for like?
I don't know.
District, right?
The other thing we don't really have listed here that we probably ought to keep in mind as well is, is one of the reasons that the the board did discuss this um, previously is. Is uh. As far as ongoing funds and, you know, we're, we're gonna have to. We are gonna have a big increase to to properly run the new high school. And we felt like this truth and taxation, that the holding the rates would would allow us to do that, we don't have that listed anywhere. But I think in the ongoing nature of what we've got, that we we can handle it and. And you take, you take that factor and. And I, I think the other reason that, you know, we've we've always, we've always held rates in truth and taxation, that's kinda been the. That's kinda been the baseline, we've had truth and taxation years where we were above holding the rate, where we actually bumped the rate. Um, and it seemed like back in the day, Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, when when we were doing those year after year, truth and taxation hearings. The minimum was was hold the rate.
Right.
And I think that's why it was natural for us as a staff to think. Um, you know, when the board first came in and talked about holding the rate, that sounded like the right thing to do to us and. I, because that's, that's kinda even been the the minimum over the years and. And we we had a few factors involved that we wanted to. To know that we were addressing and one of them was to fund, to fund running. The new high school. And and the scenario was, what if, and I'm gonna go ahead and say this out loud and I. What if, um. What if this law comes out next year and people can referendum truth and taxation hearings? That's the other reason why we were comfortable, if you remember upstairs and in different times when we've been able to to talk about this. Why we were, why we were comfortable holding the rate is we thought this may be our last time to do it without, without it going on the ballot. And I, my last conversation with Lexi Cunningham, Mary Ann.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you.
And she believes, she believes that it will be back.
So interim session, we knew it was coming back and they were working on it, do we have an interim update on what, because they, they flat out told us. You can't bankrupt, you can't like bankrupt school district budgets, you have to change your bill, period. And so do we have any updates on where he's coming out of interim at?
I don't, I haven't heard.
I haven't heard either. I mean, I get that, but I feel like we also have to operate not from a place of fear, but of, hey, if they're gonna come at kids. We got parents and communities that'll say, don't be coming at kids. Cause it's not a matter of like, oh, like, oh, they're gonna referendum, I think it's a matter of they're coming at kids and education and. That's what sustains our community, our state and our country.
The flip side of that, we saw what they did in January.
Yeah, that didn't.
And January.
Didn't carry the bond.
Didn't work this year, you know?
Didn't work with the vouchers, they felt, they filmed.
They didn't care, and that's true, they didn't care, they didn't care what the public input was and they punched it through.
Right.
So if they do that, yeah, it's it's, then they are full on announcing they're trying to destroy public education in Utah.
I'll never, I'll never forget the J L C meeting.
I know.
When I sat down there and felt like I'd been kicked in the guts when I figured out that this was a real thing.
Yep.
And they were actually pushing it and there was support and it was being, it was being. Brought up by some very powerful legislatures, it was being carried by a freshman, but that was only in.
He was a puppet.
He was a puppet and and uh. And when that happened, um, I was sick about the fact that we weren't gonna be able to, we weren't gonna be able to move our. Our payment over from from debt service to, and and we, we would've been in a really tough spot, so.
We would've been screwed.
I think the, I think the fact that there is a chance that there'll be some legislation. Next year that gives the. That gives the folks here in the valley an opportunity to get a petition and get us placed on the ballot, just like they did the North Fields. Ten to twenty acre zoning change and they got it reversed, I think there's been two things the county's done that's been reversed. In recent years by referendums, um. I just, I just feel like that's something we have to consider.
It's a factor, it's a factor, I don't want it to be number one, but yeah, it's definitely a factor. Um, yeah.
What's?
Any questions? But you.
No, I, my, mine's more about um. S R Os, remind me what our contract or agreement with the sheriffs or the Heber city, how much do we have to pay our new S R Os?
We're probably getting about to the end of those contracts, Sean, I don't know if you remember when their lifespan.
We just redid the contract for the, for the sheriff. The other day with Sheriff Rick, me, Jason wanted, I sat down with him, so we just redid it. It's gone up a little bit, obviously because of the cost of wages and that kind of stuff, but. A very similar contract, that it's just gone up a little, I could give you the percent, I don't know it off the top of my head, but because of inflation and the cost of wages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're gonna need new S R Os.
For the school.
Yeah, we need just, something at the new school.
Well, and we might need it before that too.
Yeah, we've talked about that.
Yeah.
I wonder if any of your questions?
Well, no, I was just, I I wanna give everybody an opportunity, do you have any questions on this?
Alright.
I guess my biggest thing is I feel like the message. Like, we have our notices that went out, let's say it's a thirty-four percent revenue increase. But let's get to the nitty gritty, people are upset because on their tax notice, it says forty-seven point five seven. I understand how it gets there. But I think we need to talk about like. How to explain that properly, cause. The video I feel like needs to go out as soon as possible and that's one of the additions that it's like, well, let's explain it, let's explain why forty-seven point five seven is. Not. All new, like we're moving from debt service to capital, like.
Keith, why do they put forty-seven point five seven on there?
Cause, cause we're, we're getting penalized on that nine million dollars, we, the.
Yeah.
The debt service certified rate. Um, is dropping, like I said, it generated thirteen million, now it's doing four. And and we don't get credit for reducing it from thirteen to four, we only get penalized for raising capital nine million dollars.
And that's how I've been trying to explain it.
And that's what I've explained it, but especially in the video, I feel like just showing someone's forty-seven and saying, of this forty-seven percent, this.
It's al- it's almost a third.
Is.
It's twenty-eight percent. Twenty-eight percent of the.
Not new revenue in that sense.
Keith, Keith, I have a question about that, so I just wanna understand this, so who gives you the rate?
The, the certified tax rate system from the Utah State Tax Commission. Uh, generates the, the uh. Certified rate.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, so then did you go to the tax commission and say, we don't need blah 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 in the. Bond fund, we only need.
In the debt service fund.
Two point five one.
Right.
So, so we, we go to them and say.
We told, we put in.
We don't need that.
We're, we're generating four point one million dollars this year instead of thirteen. And and so that's certified tax rate.
So we'll lower it, but we're not gonna tell anyone about that.
Yeah, well, right.
That's how, that's how they've written the code, they've written the code to be, in my opinion, disingenuous. They, they want, they want to make it scary and and as unappealing to the taxpayer as possible. And uh. We don't know all their motivations, I mean, we didn't, we didn't really expect it to say forty-seven percent, we thought it was gonna say thirty-four.
No. Yeah.
And then they tacked on all that extra, I I think for basically saying, well, it, well, it could've, should've, would've.
Does Joey have different? So that's kinda where, like, state statute binds us on what we publicly notice, I'm assuming Joey is bound by some sort of. Equation.
Yeah, she doesn't write that, it it's generated by the.
That, it's generated, but it's. I think we need to accentuate to people that. Her, the state requires her to notice it this way, the state requires us to notice it this way, we are not trying to like.
Does she? She doesn't print these, does she, do these, does she, are these printed in her office or do they come from the state?
I don't, I don't know who prints it, I mean.
But the language and everything comes through a predetermined.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it is, it is unfair.
We need to.
At least sitting in our shoes, it is.
So, do you want the messaging changed in that?
And the other thing that's going, going down is the basic rate, is it still going down?
Right. Yes.
The basic rate's also going down. And and that's another part of the reason why the rate looks all scary, but then when they, when they run the scenarios. Most, there's a lot of people getting a tax decrease.
You've, you've all seen this graph.
Mm-hmm.
With showing the total rate.
Yeah.
And the decline, even though, you know, this, this right here is the huge drop in debt service. And then this is the increase in the bond voted and capital, which they lump altogether, so it, they make it look as dire as they can.
And I agree, there's people that open their tax notice and they look at it and they say, school districts increasing their budget by fifty, fifty percent.
Mm-hmm.
Of course we're not, we're not, we're not increasing our hundred and forty million dollars by seventy million dollars, that's, but that's what some people think when they, when they see it.
I had someone light me up about that.
It's only forty-seven percent of those three rates for one, and then for two, it's disingenuous how it's figured, how it's calculated.
So the, the twenty-three million dollars that we're. That we're generating with this holding the tax is same, the same, thirty-nine percent of it is that nine million dollar switch.
Thirty-nine percent of it, that's.
Um, and so if, if you applied that thirty-nine percent.
Wow.
To that six, forty-seven point five seven percent. See, see, that should say twenty-eight point six percent. But it doesn't.
And it, and it only relates to those levels.
Yeah, yeah, that forty-seven percent does not include the debt service decrease. You can see, I'm, I'm just looking at mine from last year. On, on my, on the debt service, I paid four hundred and forty-four last year, this year it's only a hundred and twelve. So it came down three hundred and thirty dollars, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. The other one went up. About the same, you know, about the same, my, my taxes, even though my. I think you've all seen my thing here, um, my. My lot went up fifty thousand and my taxes went down. So.
Thirty-nine percent.
So in reality, it's more of the twenty-eight percent. Is what you're saying.
Twenty-eight point six instead of forty-seven.
Of the one fund.
I'm, what's that?
Of the one fund is all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And when they say.
Instead of forty-seven.
Cause they lump them all together.
Right, well, they lumped three of them together, yeah.
Right.
Twenty-eight point, what was it?
I'm sorry?
Twenty-eight percent, twenty-eight point, what was it?
I, that forty-seven point five seven would become twenty-eight point five nine. If, if we got credit for reducing the debt service by nine million.
So here's another question, someone sent screenshots to me of our, our Facebook page. And I asked Jason about this too, but I feel like it's not being. Conveyed to the public that last year we let rates float down. They say we never let rates float down, but last year we didn't do truth and taxation.
We haven't done truth and taxation for four years.
And three of those years were the staple drop and last year we let it float, right?
Actually, last year was the third of the third year, three years.
Okay. But it floated down.
We, we, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, we didn't do anything to the last. The last truth and taxation hearing we held was in twenty nineteen. And then it's, it's done, done its thing with that stapler error uh, for three years and now we're four years away from that last truth and taxation hearing.
When the graph shows that drop in the rate, that's what has.
You're asking if it dropped last year?
Slowed down.
Well, I'm just saying, we didn't like, everybody says that we never let. Rates float down. But.
We just didn't do anything.
We do, but we're not announcing that.
Right.
Whereas I.
Well, that graph shows that we've let the rates go down. The rates, rates have gone down. Look.
This is, this is twenty nineteen.
Rates flow.
So if they say you don't, you can show them that graph and show them that we have.
Yeah.
In twenty nineteen, it was above. It was above D double O eight. Now it's barely above double O. It was above D double O eight. Now, it's barely above double O five. So, we, it's gone down. You know.
Double O seven.
Basically, basically, four forty percent.
That's in the video, right? Did I see that in the video?
Yes.
The the chart is, yeah.
I hope so.
You know, you know where I think we are right now is, okay, we've gone through capital, we've looked at the Eminobah Fund.
I hope so.
And it, to me, and tell me if I'm pointing this in the right direction, is we're getting into messaging. So, does it make sense to watch the video? Do we have any other questions on?
Watch the video.
Unless we have other. So, the twenty, when we were talking, our scenarios were thirty-four and twenty-eight, but you're saying we have twenty-eight here? No, that was.
I'm just saying that forty-seven percent of.
Never mind, that was revenue, that wasn't rate.
They're not.
Never mind, they're not the same. Got it. Answered that. Do you?
Okay.
Get what that was? So, this isn't the revenue, this is the rate, the percentage inside of it. Okay. I say, watch the video.
Keith, am I, am I wrong in looking at this? If I look at my twenty twenty-two taxes.
That you paid?
That I paid, and I looked at just the school districts portion of it. We paid about, I paid about thirty-two hundred dollars in twenty twenty-two, and this year, I'm paying thirty-three something. You sure I'm going with that?
Do you mind?
No, not at all. And I'm looking at what I paid in twenty twenty-two to what's, what we're proposing with the increases, and it's, it's, it's only like a hundred and fifty bucks. No, that doesn't factor, that doesn't give credit for the growth that we should've done a break. Yeah.
That doesn't give credit.
No.
Did you prop the increase now, you?
Fifty grand, same as Keith's.
So, last year, you paid thirty-two seventy-three on those three rates.
Oh, wait, no.
Yeah, no, this one's not much more.
It's a drop. We paid this last year. Budget's approved, we paid this.
Yeah, so, you're right. It went from thirty-two seventy-three to thirty-three twenty-four. So, it went up fifty, you know, fifty-one.
The only thing, the only thing that's.
Is six point three.
To say that makes it look like we only raised it fifty bucks, but we're not, we don't give them any credit for the, for the valuation growth.
This is what we.
Right.
So.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Just start here with me.
Okay, okay. When you say leave all the rates, it's a float down. This is the float down.
Right.
What's your overall bill, according to the code down?
You have that number?
Yeah, about, about a hundred bucks.
Hundred bucks down?
Yeah.
That's why we can't do that.
Exactly.
And I had, and we had, same as Keith, I had a little bit of growth, too, for a little bit of a increased value.
Okay, so the only place we can.
Is right here.
Here, yeah. It's here.
This is, that's it, that's it.
That would be, at least that's my understanding.
I know there are some areas that got hit pretty hard this year.
With some reassessments?
Yeah. Stephanie Stephanie could tell us an area that got pretty, hit pretty hard.
Yeah, Cobble Cobblestone did, too.
Is it?
Was Garrett still here?
He had a soccer game in Salt Lake.
He's in, he's in Cobblestone.
I think he asked you guys, asked you. I know they did. I've looked at a lot of theirs. They they went up about, someone went up about a hundred percent.
Go ahead.
Oh, you can, you're fine.
I don't have a question.
Oh, I thought you were, you want us to say our, so our conversation, Kim was asking, cuz if we can only float something down. To lower this, it would basically only be this bottom corner one that we've discussed, because that's where the capital difference is. Because we have the general fund that we have to maintain, that we've given those, we have to pay the utilities, we have to pay for FTEs, we have to pay for all these things. But the capital fund is where, if we float anything down, it's gonna be there, and then it's a float down with the understanding. That it would require maybe a year or two more if we are working towards that cash build. So, we were saying, in reality, basically, it's scenario four that we had discussed in our minds as scenario four.
But the scenario.
Is that.
Scenario four keeps capital the same.
So, what, no, it's in between scenario four and scenario three, cuz we didn't, that was the difference that we had talked about. The float down to split it.
But that that just kinda prolongs, prolongs the plan two years.
One versus three. Three million more in capital versus.
Or you're just kicking the can down, just making it longer, and our goal to do what we wanna do, right? By adding that.
I.
Yeah.
If if you, if you let the capital go down. It just increases the need, you know, if if we did get hit by, you know, all this growth in Daniels or Sawmill or wherever, and had to build a high school or an elementary school.
Yeah.
We can't do the cash, yeah.
Then we wouldn't have the cash to do it um for longer, you know, much longer, and, you know, you could do a half-bond, half-cash. I don't, I don't know. If if you could pass a half-bond.
And that's our, yeah, that's the question is, if we went with a different scenario, let's say we didn't hold the rate and we let up, do a partial float down. Do we have enough money to do what we need to do? That's the question.
Cuz we aren't messing with general.
You just have to, you just have to wait longer to to build.
It would just be capital.
Wait longer.
Cuz if we did capital at like double O eighteen twenty-five, Cory and I had talked about this, and it's a split between three and four. So, it still adds the one point five to capital. Versus a three. That was the discussion there, if we were looking at a four.
I don't know. She's just asking.
Yeah.
Are there other options, other numbers we can look at, to let it float down a little bit, to give the taxpayers a little bit of a break, but still get done what we wanna get done?
A compromise, yeah, it's basically.
Did I work that? Like a compromise.
Our job is to be that bridge between the community and the district, district and the community. Both sides need this. We know we can maintain and provide at this. People are saying this is killing us. Is there a halfway?
A compromise.
Or not even a halfway, a three-fourths of the way, a somewhere, a give.
Just some kind of a, a compromise.
On the capital. What were you gonna say?
Oh, I, I think they'll, well. I don't know that you'd reduce the fury that's gonna be here Wednesday with that. I mean.
I'm not looking to reduce that. I'm looking to. I mean, we all have somebody that we know, if it's a person that we can help. Family of eight, mom's got cancer, two hundred bucks is two hundred bucks. The fury is gonna be there no matter what. I get that, but the argument shouldn't be, don't look at a compromise because the level of fury is gonna be crazy. It's there, we'll deal with it. It's, can we help?
Yeah, whether people notice or not, is it something we can entertain to just say that we helped some people? That's all.
It provides for us, it provides for our future. It might take a year or two more.
But it helped out.
What are your thoughts?
I have names.
Well.
I know.
My thoughts are the message changed from a month ago to today of what we need to capital budget. We were never aware that we were gonna buy the church property now.
Yeah.
That we needed to, you know, the Center Creek base, we need, those, those aren't things that we were told a month ago.
No.
So, I felt like the messaging changed, and the need for the capital budget is, to me, more urgent now than it was a month ago because of what we knew. All we heard was, we wanna try to build an elementary school for cash, and now it's, we need to build an elementary school, we need to buy Midway property, we need to buy Center Creek property. You know, those are all, that's much different than we heard before. So, to me, I think, we need the capital budget and leave it where it is.
And my feeling is the exact same way, you know, coming out of there.
So, I don't want you guys, I think I flip-flopped, but the messaging's different today than it was about the.
Oh, it's, I, we wrote down the same thing, like, wait, what? I didn't know about the.
I can get into what's different for me.
Yeah, I didn't know about Midway. I didn't know we were still pursuing that. I didn't know.
We just, that just, that just happened.
Jordanell, we hadn't, like, that kinda had been floating, but like, Midway, I thought we were looking at donation, um.
Well, that, fair enough, Midway was kinda off the board until recently, so I I get that.
Donation and Midway?
Yeah.
Well, the, yeah, the guy came and met with us. Wednesday of last week?
Yeah, I, I get that.
That's the first we heard about that. There was news, but.
But we didn't know, you didn't know about that, we didn't know about that a month ago when we proposed this, and so.
I think what's changed, the messaging that's changed for me, I'm still kinda wondering about Sawmill, you know, the Center Creek area. I still wanna see, I know there's some proposed neighborhoods going up there, and so we probably will need an elementary school, but. Even if I took that out, the, you know, kind of our discussion about the teachers, had no idea that they had to. Drop down, you know, if they're twenty-year teachers, they had to drop down to. Step eleven.
Ten, eleven.
Step eleven.
Um, that was kind of a bit of a game changer for me. Um, you know, just looking at the general fund list. It is what it is. It's where we are. I don't, I don't feel like there's anything. I don't know. Salaries, we'll have to dismiss that.
From my position, you know, I called Tom last night and said, hey, you know, le- leaving the meeting last time, very unclear of where this money was, was going. Th- this has been very clear today where this is going to happen and what the, that that, this discussion just needed to happen for me to to say, you know what? Holding the rate in this scenario, this allows us to do this.
Yeah, I do wish we would've had this.
We didn't.
A clear discussion like this a month ago.
Right. So.
Cuz that would've helped us when, in talking to people who we talked to.
Yeah, this scenario, we, I, I can say, hey, we're doing this to pay teacher salaries. That's what it is, that's what it is. I understand, but I understand Mary Ann's point. It it would be good to look good to people that we're trying to help a little bit. It would.
Yeah.
I don't, we're not gonna look good. I'm not worried about looking good. I'm not worried, I'm not worried about looking good to anybody. I'm worried about, can we financially compromise in a way that doesn't hurt our future? It might slow it down, but hurt the future? No. Slow it down, yes, but will that give a little on the community side? It's that meeting.
Understood.
And I.
Cuz, yeah, I'm not looking to look good. We're not going to.
I have the same question. Can can we give a little without. Hurting the district in any way or hurting the students? Students, teachers, they're our priority. We wanna give them what they, you know, what we wanna give them. Is there a different scenario that we can entertain that?
Can capital at double O eighteen twenty-five still do what we need it to do? It would just take longer, right?
Yeah.
Do we want it to take longer? Do we, do we want?
It's not even do we want, can we afford for it to take longer?
We gotta, we gotta high-rise being built here, right in the Sawmill area, and I mean, it, we're, we're gonna need this, the.
I know.
Bought, we bought the piece of property in Sawmill for a reason. I mean, that's not.
Right, right.
Yeah, we don't wanna back off of that.
But we need it before that.
We oughta, we oughta to build the school. That would decrease us by about, that would decrease the capital by about.
Just let us go down this rabbit hole.
Yeah, it's rabbit hole only, rabbit hole only.
That's fine.
I think about one point seven million, is that, are you, you're not figuring anything?
I wasn't. If you went to eighteen twenty-five.
Double O eighteen twenty-five.
Wouldn't you take the valuation times that, Keith?
Yeah.
I'd give you twenty-seven point seven million versus twenty-nine point four. Check my math.
For capital.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's in the middle of, middle of three and four.
So, instead of adding six point three. It took it. Down to four point six.
Yeah.
If we did that.
You know, one thing.
Four point, what was the answer?
Four point si, it, from six point three to four point six.
Four point six.
One thing that I'm reminded of. As, you know, we had the conversation in Orlando. And as we've had conversations about the lease revenue bond. The capital fund is the fund that allows us to do what we've done, which is not have to go.
Pay off our high school.
Well, not have to go get a bond from the public.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, so the capital fund, you know, you can't play a shell game.
No.
To Chris Crittins' point, you know, you can't take money from the capital fund and give it to teachers, and you can't take it from the Eminobah and. Em- Eminoba fund and and build schools. The the capital fund is, in my opinion, more important than any fund that we have.
Isn't that what we always look at every month is, what what do we have in the capital? I mean, that's the, exactly the.
Capital fund gives us the ability to build schools, in the whole, the whole concept of. Building authority, the whole concept of lease revenue. That all is because of the capital.
Bond ratings are based off capital, right?
Bonds are based, yeah.
Bond ratings are both, are mostly on the general fund, fund balance.
General fund balance.
But but the reality is. Tom's right on. If you were. If you were asking me, if we were gonna go, if we were gonna explore a rabbit hole, we would be, we'd be better off. Leaving capital alone, and 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 partly because of just the reasons that he said is, I'm not sure when the climate. In our community is gonna be, is gonna be positive for ever passing another bond. I'm not sure when that's gonna happen. I'd, I would, I would dare make a bet not, we'll all be gone. Something's gotta change drastically, and I think the political cl- climate has to change. Because right now, everybody's, we used to come together to build schools. Now, we gotta have these big fights, and we gotta have these big fights on social media and. And and I just don't see a bond passing. Was there, was there a bond that passed last year, education? I mean, did we see that?
Somebody's got one going.
It was like one small little school that did. Alpines failed. Alpines failed and it had almost a zero, it had almost a zero impact on your, but on your tax notice.
There's one going on the ballot this year.
So, so my, my point is, we would, you know, we would rather entertain rabbit hole, speak on the general rather than the capital, and.
Could we delay buying a school bus? Right, that's probably.
Okay, that makes sense.
The rabbit hole we wanna go down.
Okay.
Versus, do we wanna not put money in the capital fund?
And and I I think remembering that part of the, the part of the reason that we were comfortable. Is again, this fact that, will we have the ability to do this in three years? Will we have the ability to do this? Um, and and Mary Ann's right, we've gotta figure out, we've gotta figure out some way to fund our schools, and we've, we've, we've lived in, in some pretty prosperous times. Since I've been the superintendent, and everybody in this room can remember sitting around the table. The way the tax code is designed is it, is it, it shrinks, and as inflation goes up, and the pre-pandemic prices versus today, and all these things go up. If we don't do truth in taxation, our budget shrinks because of inflation, and so, it's, it's just, it's just a. I, I, I think from, I'm just speaking more personally, and maybe from some of the staff that I think would agree, and certainly Keith and Jason, is. There's, there's an opportunity in front of us to kinda set ourselves up into a pretty good position for a few years to come. And and if we, you know, if if we, if we were to make this, so let's, let's say in the, the seven point seven, in the, is it seven point seven?
In the general.
Seven point seven in the general, if if we had our hearing, or or maybe at some other point, the board came out and said, we hear you. We're gonna drop, you know, we're gonna drop this rate, and we're gonna. We're gonna drop, you know, we're gonna drop this rate and we're gonna, we're gonna let this rate float down this much. I think that I, you know, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support whatever the board says and I'm, and I'm talking too much. I would rather be quiet and, and let you guys kinda work through this, but. But, um, can we do that? Sure, we can do that. You know, we can take the two point four for twenty four off the table and that, well, that.
For twenty five.
Gets us down to, yeah, FY twenty five, that gets us down to seven, seven and we go from there and. And we do, you know, we do have a fund balance, but as soon as anything that we take off here then starts eating into the fund balance. And, and we don't want a negative fund balance moving negative, cause that does affect our, our bond rating. Um, but if, if that's the rabbit hole we go down, I think we talk about this and, and basically what we're saying is, we're okay. With what we've got and we'll deal with this other later. And I think it takes a pretty big, I think it takes a pretty big thinker and, and a board that's concerned more with just a year or two. This, this truth in taxation hearing is, is forward thinking and it's thinking of. It, it, all we're doing is holding your rate. We didn't raise anybody's rate. If your taxes went up this year, it's because of your valuation, which we have no control. And, and in doing so, we're gonna ensure our stewardship with the teachers and, and the students is gonna be solvent, very solvent. For the foreseeable future. If we don't, if we take the two point four for twenty five off, then next year, we gotta deal with that. We gotta figure out if we can do it or not. We gotta decide if we cut into fund balance or if we just don't go with such a big raise. Are we gonna catch up to Park City and keep losing teachers? Do we wanna do this ten year thing? And, and I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna leave it there, but I would say, I would be more comfortable with this conversation if we switched it over to general and capital.
So I get what you're saying, I get what Tom's saying. I guess in my mind, I see general fund as things that we need now. And capital is more. Does it, it's, it's more long term, so if we need these things now and we know that we need these things now. And this is again, me, like, I'm seeking to understand, I'm seeking for information, okay? General to me is, we need it now, this is stuff we know we're gonna pay for and we're good. The rabbit hole to me is in the future. Are we gonna remain the third fasting, fastest growing county in the nation? Is that where we can give a little? I get the reasons for capital and how. You know, it, but to me, it's the longer, so. I don't know, I don't wanna cut things now that I know we already need as a district versus can we wait a year or two in the future? For Sawmill. For Jordanell. I mean, Jordanell has a ten year time clock going.
I, I think to their point is, by cutting the capital budget though. Then we're probably forced, we probably have to bond for stuff. And I think right now we feel like it's not an environment that we can bond for anything.
Can we do more than one lease revenue bond as a local building authority?
I don't even know if we're gonna.
But you gotta pay.
We don't know for, again, it's stuff in the future.
You gotta pay the bonds, you gotta pay the interest somehow.
Yeah.
So you do a lease revenue bond, are you gonna pay the interest?
That, that's why, that's why there's no voter, you know, voter approval needed is, cause you're committing to make those payments out of your capital.
Out of capital.
Yeah.
And that, that's another scary part of reducing the capital is, you guys are on the hook for these payments.
We're on the hook for the nine point two.
Because in the past, it was automatically taxed out and collected and paid and you didn't have anything to do with it. Because the voters had given their stamp of approval to it. Now you're on the hook for it.
The capital fund's the golden goose.
That's our FICO score right there. I mean, that's it.
It became the golden goose when we decided it'd be a land use, though, I mean, a building authority. And we're gonna pay bond payments from the capital fund.
So.
So we either pay cash or we do a lease revenue bond from here on out. Cause going to the public and bonding is not an option.
And you're, and to your, to your point, Mary Ann.
That's what I'm saying, till we, till we carry more than one lease revenue bond.
Yes, the answer's yes.
If you can pay for it.
If you, well, yeah, we're not gonna bond if we can't pay for it.
And we gotta fund the capital to do it.
And you gotta pay cap, you gotta pay it from the capital.
What happens if, what happens if the legislation passes this bill that they can referendum?
We're screwed.
And, and we try to do, we, we approve a lease revenue bond and then we can't go to truth and taxation and increase more capital.
Then you go into deficit.
And that's, and that's where everybody was up in arms.
Then you.
And they are gunning for Wasatch County, unfortunately.
Let them come after us.
Well, the whole state is, they're trying to catch us.
Yep.
Alright, let's watch the video. How does that sound?
Can we, can we, I, there's another meeting I gotta be at six. Can we do a hard stop at some certain point or what's our?
Yeah, so the, so I would say that the purpose of the video is to help answer the questions.
Of what we've answered.
That we're gonna, let's watch it and see what we can tell John we wanna add.
Okay.
Education is holding a truth in taxation hearing on Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty three at six thirty PM to discuss the tax rate with the citizens of the county. It is important to understand Utah state law regarding school taxes. The state of Utah allows a school district to collect the same amount in taxes that are collected in the previous year, along with any taxes on new growth. As assessed valuations grow, the state uses the certified tax rate system to lower the tax rate, holding the money stream to the same level as the previous year. If however, the school district decides to hold the tax rate steady to generate additional income to meet the district's needs. The state of Utah requires that a truth in taxation hearing be held to inform the public. Wasatch County School District is proposing to hold the tax rate at the same level as last year. The state would call this a tax increase since the school district didn't allow the tax rate to drop to a lower number. To understand the actual tax rate used for Wasatch County School District, we have provided a direct comparison of tax rates for twenty twenty two and the proposed tax rate for twenty twenty three. There are five levies that make up the total school district levy. However, on your local tax bill, you will see three levies. The first one is the basic state school levy. That is controlled by the state of Utah and is not impacted by the truth in taxation hearing. The second item on the list, the Wasatch County School District, is in reality made up of three independent levies. The board local levy, the voted local levy, and the capital local levy. The final line on your tax bill is for the school district bond. That is made up of the debt service levy which is used to pay for the existing school bonds. These are the rates for each of these levies for twenty twenty two. These are the proposed rates for twenty twenty three. As you can see, the board local levy and the voted local levy remain the same as in twenty twenty two. The debt service levy will see a drop from zero point zero zero one zero five six to zero point zero 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 two five one. As the final payment is made on the Wasatch High School bond. In conjunction with that final payment, the capital local levy will see an increase from zero point zero zero one one three two to zero point zero zero one nine three seven. That is a zero sum change in tax rates, as the money used to pay for Wasatch High School, which came from the debt service levy. Will now be used to pay for the new high school currently under construction, which comes out of the capital local levy. You can see in the totals at the bottom of each column that the final tax rate imposed by the school district for twenty twenty three is the same as the rate for twenty twenty two. Because of increased property valuation in the county, holding this rate will generate a fourteen million dollar revenue increase. There are three important reasons why Wasatch County School District is proposing this course of action. First, of the increased revenue, seven point seven million dollars will be used for teacher salaries, utilities, fuel, and other operating costs affected by inflation. This chart illustrates the impact that inflation is having on the operating costs of Wasatch School District. The first column shows the cost for salaries, benefits, and utilities for the fiscal year twenty twenty. The second column shows the cost for fiscal year twenty twenty three. The third column shows the dollar increase to each of these budgets. And the fourth column shows the percentage of increased cost to the district for each of these categories. Second, six point three million dollars will be placed in the capital fund for future school projects. As the district anticipates that continued growth throughout the county will result in additional schools being built. The board is proposing to hold the capital levy at its current rates in order to generate new income for the express purpose of paying down existing debt. And minimizing interest paid for future school construction. Third, an additional nine million dollars will be a revenue neutral change for the taxpayers. The debt service levy will be decreased by nine million dollars while the capital levy will be increased by that same amount. This nine million dollars will be used to make the last payment on the existing high school. That payment will retire the old bond and then those funds will be used for future payments on the second high school, resulting in a net neutral change for taxpayers. The truth in taxation meeting will change the source of revenues from the debt service levy that has been used to pay for the current high school over to the capital levy, which will be used to pay for the new high school. Since the payment for the current high school has already been factored into the tax rate, that tax rate will just continue at the current level to pay for the construction bond for the new high school. Resulting in no new taxes being assessed. This graph shows the actual tax rates levied by Wasatch County School District in the years from two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty three. The column on the left is the tax rate going out across the years on the horizontal graph. The graph has four lines representing four categories of rates on the graph. The top line is the total tax rate. The second line is the combined voted local levy, the capital local levy, and the board local levy. Next comes the state controlled levy, which is called the basic rate, and then finally, the debt service rate. While there are ups and downs on the graph as taxes change, it shows that the rates are going down. The decrease in the debt service levy is due to the final payment being made on the Wasatch High School bond. While the increase in the capital local levy is to reflect the payment on the new high school bond. These two funds even out as the one goes down the same amount as the other goes up, holding the overall tax rate level. But perhaps most important is the top graph, the total tax rate, which is taking a substantial turn downward. Members of the Wasatch County School District Board of Education take their fiduciary responsibilities very seriously. They are mindful of the overwhelming responsibility to provide the children in this valley with a safe learning environment that promotes student achievement and opportunity. Wasatch County School District continues to strive to be the highest achieving district in the state by continuing to attract and retain the best teachers for our students. Which can only be accomplished if teacher salaries are competitive with other school districts. Satisfying these responsibilities drives the action of the school board and other district leaders. Opportunity for public input will be provided at the truth in taxation meeting and residents can send comments or questions for the board to questions at wasatch.edu in advance of the meeting.
Alright, what changes do we have?
Maybe it's just some wording, just to make the public understand a little bit more. We use, you know. Wording that makes sense to us, but they look at it and go, huh? I don't know, like zero sum change, revenue neutral change. We get it, net neutral. Just make it more lay term friendly, I guess, I don't know, so they understand it. And the only other one, I, the word only, I already told Paul about this, like. To say that to retain teachers, you know, pay is huge.
A factor.
A factor, yeah. Not necessarily the only factor. So.
I don't.
Satisfying these re- responsibilities, again, I don't wanna wordsmith, I have stuff there, but. I think satisfying is a, a very subjective word. Maybe taking care of these responsibilities drives the actions of the school board and other district leaders, cause are we ever gonna satisfy those responsibilities truly? And at what level? I just think taking care of sounds a little better, but that same, that paragraph I've, I've mentioned this. Um, adding something in there about our responsibilities to the community as well. We talk about education, but the reality is this board represents the community as well. I think something needs to be added there. Um.
So was that, was that additional in beyond the word satisfying?
Just like taking care of these responsibilities, however you guys want to word, I just don't think satisfying is.
I got that one, I just wondered if you had moved on to an, another point.
Oh, the, my next one is, is Keith, kinda going back to what you said, we, like in March about lease revenue, we all knew we were gonna do li- lease revenue, cause we. Told everybody we're doing lease revenue last year. I guess that, that's kinda my over, overall comment on the video is, we're still not. I feel like capitalizing on the fact that we are completing a process that we told you we were going to do. And part of building back trust is saying, hey, we promised you this last year and we're doing it this way. And it goes back to like the reasons, like the number one reason should be that we're completing the le- lease revenue bond process. That's why we, we were having to do that regardless of HB three seventy two, regardless of any of it. We were having to move debt service to capital.
So right now, that, that's listed as the number three reason. You want it number one?
I wanted number one, because that's like the first thing that we're gonna do. Um, that's, again, these are my in, my inputs, if anybody else had, wants, like, if you don't agree, obviously speak up, um.
No, you're, you're good at wordsmithing.
It's just, I feel like.
Anything to make it more clear?
Well.
For, for me, I, I like the, I get lost in, stay where you were. No, you're totally fine. Just a- adding the greens, so if we can total them at the bottom. Cause I look at the bottom and I say, oh, it's only six hundred and sixty four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Right, when it's really six sixty four plus twenty one million. Like, that's the difference, that's the change.
So keep them like this, just add a line at the bottom.
At the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can do totals, totals, and then the grand totals at the bottom, basically give you.
Got that.
The twenty, you know, it'd be the twenty s- can't do my math, but it's twenty, what, six million, twenty seven million, twenty eight million.
Wait, what?
Change, twenty one plus.
Twenty one point nine?
Twenty one point nine, yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty two million. That's a change in two years, three years. It's a big change.
It's, it's the change from the last time we did the truth in taxation hearing. That would've been for fiscal year twenty.
It's crazy, yeah.
In November, or in, excuse me, in August of twenty nineteen.
Puts inflation into context.
Holy, yeah, yes, natural gas.
And.
That's crazy.
I think if we add somewhere in, whether it's script or what, s- since the last truth in taxation. So that they understand we need to just throw up a couple of years for jokes and giggles.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. We don't point that out in the, in the video.
Like, we don't point out that we haven't done this for four years. Sorry.
We oughta put that in the, in the video, that this is, we have not done truth in taxation, this is the first time.
And I feel like accentuating, we also have, like, per the state, your tax rate has floated down for three years. Cause they, we always get dinged on, you never let the rate float down. We have for three years.
Yeah, that needs to be stated. And the, and the, uh.
I've never heard that.
The graph shows that really well.
Yeah, and I think seeing it, hearing it, we'll talk about it, like, it's the whole teaching thing.
But I think he did a very good job of explaining why we ha- what truth in taxation is and why we have to do it. That, that makes it clear there, but. You're right, I think that needs to be stated. Hey, we haven't done this for a while. I, I also, my one thing that I would like to change is, he says, uh. On the capital side, he says to pay down existing debt, which I, I don't like, because I think that gives them an avenue to say, oh, we knew you were gonna pay down. We're gonna, you're gonna put some of that towards that new high school.
Mm-hmm.
I think we just leave it at, for future projects.
Yeah.
Unless somebody has a better idea or disagrees.
On the capital side?
Yeah, we're not, we're not saying we're doing, I think John just put that in there himself. We're not, we're not doing this to pay down existing debt.
Yeah.
We're doing this for future projects.
Question for you Keith, on back one slide. That also, on the salaries and benefits, and I, I mentioned this, I think to Jason and to Paul. Part of the, part of that salaries and benefits, doesn't that include additional new hires as well?
That's total salaries.
So maybe we accentuate like the. So maybe we accentuate like the hiring of this many, that's, so that's what I had talked to Jason a little bit about too. It's, I, yeah, I don't, sorry Wes, are you?
No, you're good.
Okay. I'm thinking like if we put in the growth of students between our last truth in taxation to now. And the hiring of how many new teachers?
Like. I kind of agree with that, cause then they don't just say, well, these, your salary just keeps going up and up, well, there's a reason why. It's not just because we give a raise, but it's because we've had to hire more people because our, our student population has changed.
Growth of new students and growth of, uh, new teachers.
Yeah. I think that would be helpful.
If they look at that slide, they think, well, we gave everybody a thirty-two percent increase over three years, but. Reality, that's not the case.
Yeah.
We do.
At the end of the day, it doesn't really matter what we do, we're still getting our ass.
Yes.
But for some people, it will matter. That's who I'm doing this for.
No, I know, I, this, this is good stuff.
I'm wondering if we point out in s- and this goes back to the lease revenue part of like adding in. Under where he's saying truth in taxation will change the source of revenue from debt service. And then completing the lease revenue bond process. Instead of calling it a construction bond, call it the lease revenue bond.
Yeah, the construction bond thing kind of.
It makes it look like we're funding our new school.
Yes, it does. We can't, we, we gotta change that.
Like, we need, to me, we should be accentuating every aspect of us completing lease revenue bond. Every single aspect.
This is the final, the final step, the final.
We told you last July we were doing this, we told you last August we were doing this, it should be no surprise that we were doing this.
Right, that's right. So you got completing the process.
Yeah, good.
Because anytime we can do that, and part of that, I think is where we can also point out like. We're doing it this way, we've saved eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars because we're pla- we listened to the community. And so we have pay, we are paying off the new high school before we open the second high school, like any way we can accentuate that. And point out the good things that they've, the community has said, can you do this? And we've done it. Put it out there, let's celebrate that.
That we paid off the high school early and.
That we're paying it off early, we pay, we saved eight hundred and.
Before we have to start making payments.
We don't really talk about that.
And we, we are saving eight hundred and thirty thousand in interest because we paid it off early. Like. Build that trust by literally saying like, this is what we've done.
And it's not gonna get everybody, but if it, yeah. People in that room who watch the video go, oh, okay, I get it. We, we did our job by getting that information out.
We'll get with John and. I do think there's some, we wanna get it out soon.
Yeah, what's the timeline for distribution?
Well, when I talk to John, we'll get, I talked to him this afternoon, we'll get all the changes to the script to him tomorrow. Claire's been taking notes, the superintendent has, um, but it will take him, Friday is the earliest we'll get a draft. It'll still take him a day to get it done, so if, do you guys wanna see it on Friday and then?
Yeah, just I think Friday, if we can put it out Friday, everybody's gonna be on Facebook Friday night and Saturday morning. That seems to be like a hot spot. And push it out, cause, oh, that was my other input. I don't even care if you use my taxes, it's public information. I think it would be very helpful to everyone, because some people are just showing up because they're pissed off about forty-seven point five seven. I think it would be so extremely helpful to show an entire preliminary tax notice. I don't even care if you use mine. Use mine, I'll volunteer mine. And literally show how you get to that on the tax notice. I know John talks about it in it. But show it on a tax notice, walk it through.
On, on your tax, did your, what did your taxes do? Or your, what did your valuation do this year?
So my value.
Stayed the same.
See, this is the fir- yeah, this is, this is only the second year in nine years I haven't been revalued.
Okay.
So mine. My taxes, my overall taxes go down for the first time in nine years.
How far?
Um, for three hundred and something dollars.
That's great.
That's good.
So, I mean, if, do we wanna use one where the valuation stayed the same or one that where it went up slightly?
Do both. And don't do a slightly. Don't do a slightly, find somebodies who went up a lot that we can get permission from.
Timberlake's folks.
What I had envisioned.
You can cross a name out, the address out.
Yeah, cross the name, the address out, I don't care, that's, but show both. Because that's the example we need to see, and it will help people understand the valuation is, is a key here along with the debt service. Like, we're completing this process, but the big factor that I feel like we're, we're kind of touching on, but we're not. Is the valuation process has been behind for ten to twelve years. This is coming out this year.
Yeah, they've been, they've been underpaying, people are so upset that it's going up, but the reality is they've been getting them.
I've been paying their portion.
I was one of them, I, my taxes didn't get, they didn't get messed with for ten, twelve years.
And I, and I feel like respectfully, like people in my neighborhood is, yeah.
Then they went to the roof of the moon by.
I mean, no one was complaining when their taxes were.
I'm just gonna tell you, well, basically, I mean, our list is getting so long that John's may not, you know, he, he may be the weekend.
Well, and that's where it's, is this something we need to do just at the meeting? I think this would save a lot of people.
Don't put that in the video, I'm thinking at the meeting.
At the meeting?
Yeah.
To me, I was thinking, cause a lot of people are coming to the meeting because of that.
Right, no, I'm saying demonstrates at the video.
I was talking about video, adding it to the video.
The video is getting too long, like it's, it's, they're gonna lose.
Should we do a separate video for the meeting that's just this?
We could just do a, we could just do a, like a PowerPoint.
That's what I was.
Okay.
That's what I.
Just something that shows actual bills, that one that stayed, the valuation stayed the same, the other valuation. Caught up from the last ten years.
Went up like fifteen thou- fifteen hundred for you. From last year.
I think that would be helpful, that's me.
Dang, no, sorry. It went up how much?
About fifteen hundred bucks.
About fifteen hundred bucks for Tyler.
You should have been in to tell them to raise your taxes earlier Tyler, you need to pay more.
Well, I know, I just, yeah.
So, sorry, so that conversation using some examples. Don't put it in the video?
No, we'll put it on the slideshow.
Slide show.
Professor's making the video too complicated.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we, John would just.
Okay.
He might tip over.
But I agree with doing some kind of walkthrough.
Yeah, we can do.
But do we think that would be, like, if we keep this vet- video separate and do a second video over the weekend that gives him this? That we can put out before it, so there's two videos before it? Cause I really think a lot of people are not gonna show up if we walk them through this. They're not showing up because of the bottom number.
We can ask, I'm all for it, Mary Ann, I, I'm all.
I mean, you guys tell me I've.
We'll just have to ask him and see what he's capable of getting.
No, I think we haven't come.
Do you guys think people are showing? Do you think people are showing up because of the bottom line or forty-seven point five?
I think they're showing up for whatever they wanna show up. Walk through that night if we can.
I just feel like getting ahead of it would help.
Is that possible to work?
Yeah, we can do a tutorial.
Yeah, we can do that, and that's like the, the stuff we're spending the money on, we can have that as part of the slideshow on.
Yes, one hundred percent, yes. Okay.
I don't know if it does us any good sending it on Facebook. I think we could send it to the parents and we can email it. But to post it on Facebook the Friday before the meeting, who's gonna respond to all those hate messages?
It's just gonna be a.
Well, we can post it without comment. If you want, I don't know, but then they'll say we're trying to send something.
Yeah.
So I, I don't think we, we back off of that. We're still putting out information. People say we don't communicate enough. Communicate. If they don't like it, say, well, we're communicating to you. Show up. If they're gonna show up because of Facebook, okay.
So we post it and not comment, not get into the ticky tacky, not get into the.
It's one weekend, but.
Not get into the individual conversations.
But I think the video goes out on every way we can.
I don't think we have to, I don't think that we need to rely on somebody from the district to defend ourselves from their comment.
No.
We're just gonna let it run if we put it on Facebook.
If you wanna, I feel like if people wanna respond, respond, but that's me.
Probably no one's going to respond, so are you okay with that?
Cause I, I agree, it's not my conversation, but I, as far as school board members and how you can. For you to engage in these, in these conversations on Facebook can deteriorate so quickly. They, people don't play fair, they don't, they don't, I mean, and it's, it's like the old wrestling with a pig story. It, it's just, I don't think it's good for you guys. I think in the last bond, we kind of got goaded into getting on Facebook and going toe to toe with all these people. It didn't work, it just made us, it just, it just put us in a worse light.
Last time I went toe to toe with Kevin Payne on, I hadn't even mentioned with you two. He asked me what was going on.
They were asking if you were having a hard day.
He was asking if I was okay.
We're a little worried about that. I guess my only thing is, is somebody personally tags, I'll tell you guys right now, someone personally tags me and I see it. I feel an obligation to respond.
Yeah, well.
Is that okay with everyone here?
Of course, you go right ahead.
Because that's, for me, just, I'm not gonna.
No, I.
Just be silent if somebody personally tags me.
Personal decision, I, I think if we can figure out how to turn comments off, then I, I would. And you will be called out for it, but.
I don't, I just say, do it. But that's me.
Following this like this temple discussion, people are just rude and ignorant and disrespectful.
It's picking up again.
I mean, I, it's not rocket science that they just moved to a valley that was founded by LDS people. And they're just on there talking about this phony religion and this and that, and they're people that live here, I just can't believe it.
I say put it out there, but that's me.
Well, let's get the video done.
Yep.
Okay, let's do that.
Yeah.
Alright Tyler. It took us two.
Okay.
How we feel?
You wanna show them that?
Feel good?
Flyover.
I'm just letting everybody know I'm still.
So where.
I'm, I'm trying to convince.
So where is everybody?
Yeah, where is everyone? Can we start with that? Where are you at?
Oh, I'm, I'm good now. I mean, I did, like I just said, I was uncomfortable after leaving, not knowing what, what we're gonna put the money towards. You know, now very clear what, with, with the plan. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine going forward with what we've decided with that. To hold the rate.
I am too.
I'm working it out. I'm not there yet. I guess that's why I'm trying to convey, because I'm basically trying to solidify for myself even. Why we're doing it at this and not floating down even on the, the capital. I guess to me, I'm focusing on the capital, I realize, I realize. But if there's a need, I'm trying to reconcile those two, so I guess that's why the video is important to me. Cause I'm not just convincing people, and not convincing, but explaining to people why we're doing this, I'm explaining it to myself to feel good enough about it. And Tuesdays or Wednesday is gonna be a big factor for me. The numbers are there. I appreciate this, like, I feel like if we ever have to do a truth in taxation and if I'm ever even there again, cause I might not be. That's really helpful.
Yeah.
For board members.
Right.
I needed to see that.
Yeah, walking into this, I, you know, I wasn't sure where I wanted to be. I was confused and I, I wish we would have had this conversation a month ago. So the numbers, seeing the numbers in better detail really helped. Um. I, I'm not really seeing anything that looks fluffy in any way as far as what we wanna do for the future.
Music.
Careful. So I, you know. Yeah, I mean.
Speaking of rabbit holes.
Baseball.
Baseball.
I, I didn't know where I was, I, I was confused, I, I wanted to. You know, I wanna help people out and calm it down a little bit and only take what we need to take, but from what I see today. We need to take what we need to take.
Well, and midway.
We got an opportunity, keep in mind.
So Tyler and I are, like, I agree with you.
Midway, yeah.
Go ahead, finish.
I'm sorry.
Finish your thought.
No, I'm just, I'm looking at school sites again, so midway, like, the donation thing's not gonna work, cause to me, it's like if we can save like ten, seventeen, whatever million. Cause I didn't realize that, I'm, I'm with Cory, like, I didn't know some of these were on i- in our future, and I think, and I appreciate you saying long-term capital. Um, cause midway, I guess in my mind, I was thinking this donation was gonna come through, and so we weren't gonna have to worry about land in midway, but.
You mean a donation of land?
Yeah.
Over by the.
Yeah.
Overlooking the pipe.
To the plant. Overlooking sewer.
Cause if we can do that and not save another, it's like, okay.
One thing that you, that I would keep in mind is, we don't, and I, I know maybe this, maybe this doesn't help, I think it does. We're gonna do this truth in taxation hearing, we do not plan on doing another truth in taxation hearing. For a while, and we know that the tax code is constructed so that we're gonna do this truth in taxation hearing and we're gonna be in good shape. And then year after year, it's gonna be restricted to the same amount that we got the year before, plus growth, and so. The float, the ra- the rate will float down next year, and the next year, and the next year. We're kind of setting things up for the future a little bit, I, I, I'm not.
And do you really think we can say that? We can really say we, we don't, we can say we don't anticipate?
One, one thing that. One thing that I, I think that's correct, I think that that's something you can say, is we don't, we don't anticipate on a, on a, another truth in taxation hearing for at least a couple of years.
But do we wanna bu- to me, that binds the hands of future boards, cause. We might not be here.
This current board doesn't anticipate.
But the current board, I think if we say the current board. Cause let's say the three of us are gone.
You want me to go get there one more year then?
Well, no, I'm saying like if the three of us are gone, like. They might come in, they might come in.
I get what Paul is saying.
You luck out one time and I get control.
I know. I'm looking at you too, cause you guys.
We're gonna have the Astro Dome and there's a baseball field.
No, this helps, this was really helpful, cause. I have to buy into, you know, these big decisions, I guess I have to buy into it, I have to be, I told Tom, I have to be able to sleep at night.
Well, this is, that's why this has been very good.
Yeah, and this helps me explain to people where the money's going. There will still be people out there who won't get it or don't see it, they're gonna see it the way they wanna see it, I get that, but this helps.
Well, and we just gotta prepare for that, what's gonna happen in this meeting, it's just gonna be, we're gonna have the Jerry Duke waddle up there and tell us, you know, everything he knows, so. We, we just gotta expect it.
That's, can I just throw out a question?
Hmm.
Do you really wanna respond after every five comments?
No.
No, no other districts responds to, I mean, you're, you're there to listen.
We should respond, I mean, I, I don't wanna sit up there and be silent.
Now, do we ask them to not repeat it if it's already been stated, please don't repeat it? That's what they say at state committee hearings.
Every visitor we've had come say, say, I can't believe that they respond to every question. Cause nobody, no, no district does.
But that's communication, and I don't agree with sitting up there and not saying, just because of the communication factor. That's what.
We'll buy pizza that night, guys.
But.
Well.
What do you guys?
Pizza at eleven, I don't know.
I mean, you could, what do you think Cory?
Trying to think what we did last time.
We responded every five.
Responded after every five, if there was a comment, if we wanted to.
If the board had a comment.
If they have something, yeah.
We could do it, do it every five, I mean, I guess.
It's basically if we wanna comment, you know, we wanna sit there and just take it, five.
Maybe we should do that.
Ten after.
After every comment, if, if you wanna respond, go ahead.
Do it after five. I would say, I thought it worked well when you, I thought you did awesome at that public hearing of stay on topic, state your name, state your address. Every five, we're gonna give the board an opportunity to respond to what you're saying. Please try not to repeat what somebody has said before, but we wanna respond to you.
I would say we're gonna give the board an opportunity to comment.
After five?
Not, not necessarily respond.
Yeah. I like that.
If we're gonna get wordy.
Comment.
Are we gonna get an officer there?
Yeah, we will. And I, I think we stick. And I, I think we stick to our, you know, we've had some times where they've, they've wanted to take more than their time. And I think it's been good when we've stuck to not going there, just to, you know, conrade the job and the lease revenue and of. Of, uh, you know, before we've had people say, you can have my five, you can have my two minutes.
Yeah, no trade, no trading of time.
That's, that's not how it works.
Okay.
And we had, uh. We had one of our constituents kinda straightened him out on that last time. If you were at the state, you'd have thirty seconds.
Oh, yeah, that's. It's our favorite, George W. S- forty-seventh's favorite too.
But it'll be good, I felt, I felt like our truth and taxation hearing was very successful. I thought it was, I thought it was very good. And this, this one can be too, we can. You guys will handle it well.
Can be more thoughts? You look like you're thinking.
I am.
So, just so I can get, um. The, the meeting this week, are we meeting, are we, is there a school meeting this week?
There is, there is, we have that on our schedule here to tell you, and that's, that's at eight o'clock in the morning on Thursday morning.
Okay. Eight AM Thursday.
Eight AM, high school auditorium, that'll be our teacher with, that, that'll be our teacher meeting with all the teachers and. Eric Campbell's got a pretty long presentation and we're gonna put Steph Dishar on the spot.
Is that the car day?
I mean, you do. Yeah, at the end of it is the, at the end of it is the target.
Car.
How long does that last that we need to be there?
I've gotta, anyway, how, how long you think we.
When does that usually get over?
I think we left afterward last week, last year, didn't we?
Yeah.
Thought we slipped out, we didn't stick around in the car.
What time will we be doing the cars, Stace, do you know?
I gotta slip out at nine.
Do you know?
Yeah, I do, and so the car will, um, the car is at, is at nine o'clock.
So we're going eight to nine.
So we're going eight to nine, then they'll give the car away and then they'll go out to their meetings.
Okay.
Small meetings.
So, anybody going to the downtown Heber planning event?
Anybody going to interlocal tomorrow?
There's a baseball meeting going on at six o'clock.
I'm going, I was planning on going to interlocal, I always do.
Tonight.
What time is that, is that six, I, I know we got like.
With the coach?
No, it's noon, it's, no.
Oh, that's good.
It's when?
Ball ball.
Six thirty.
Where's it at?
The interlocal?
Yeah. Is it the county building?
Yeah, it's the county building, sorry.
So. That's where I'm gonna go.
I'm trying, no, they have a work meeting from four to six, so it's six thirty, I think.
I go. Okay.
At the county.
Tell the coaches hello.
I know we got.
Anybody wants, yeah, I'm always there.
Well, I, I'd like to, but I don't know if I can make that.
Oh, I was gonna point that out, because on the county interlocal, just so you guys are aware, obviously come if you want, I'm planning on being there as long as I'm not paused, but.
Yeah.
Um, they are gonna have a presentation from Joey and Todd.
Oh, on the tax valuation.
On the tax valuations.
Yeah. I saw that.
So if anybody wants to come, I feel like I wanna be there because I wanna be able to explain.
They got called out in the wave today, or last week.
And.
I would love a new high school update if, oh, my God, I want to hear this.
Yeah.
That's this.
Oh, okay. Can we get that monthly?
You're gonna wear that?
Can we add that to work, please?
As soon as there's something to see, we can.
Well, no, even just like this is where we're at.
In the past, we, we can meet down there and.
Hold on, sure. Yeah.
Do that as part of our study session, but this is a little video update that we can play.
Bye Tyler.
See you Ty. Tyler, sorry.
Yeah, the guy kept calling me Corey today and I wanted to slap him.
I know.
Like, you don't know me.
I was just like, oh my gosh, cuz I call my friend Tyler, Ty, and then I'm like, ah.
I wrote a whole paper on that one time in college.
Like when people call me Mary and I'm like, my name is not Mary, my name is Marion. And I totally just didn't. Oh my hell. Telling you about a thousand.
Right in here, yeah.
There we go.
This is cool. There's a road.
It is.
Oh, I like this.
So parking lot, school site.
There's the, there's the trees.
Trees.
That tree, but, but the road will actually go, we, we will lose some of those trees there, the road goes right on through there and then.
It's kind of a tree.
And this is where the football field.
This is the, this is the athletic side, that's the wetlands right there, you can see it, it stands out very well.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
The road will come around the wetlands and then on up this side.
Is that, the shies or whatever, is there?
And we'll get out of there.
The baseball fields.
That was Nick Provost's house.
That's Nick Provost, so the shies, you're gonna see them right in the corner apparently more.
Oh, Provost's.
Yeah, right up on top.
Okay.
It's a little island in the middle there.
That's the church.
That's the church, so we're coming back this way now.
Wow, they've done a lot since I was there last.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, coming across the, correct?
There's the, these are the wings.
This is the geopiers.
The what?
They're called geopiers, they're. Making sure that, uh, there's the, you can see the cement's been poured, we got the footings around there.
Like some footings.
Footings, a little bit of a pony wall right here.
Wow.
Like, we know.
Those are the two wing areas right through there.
Yeah, two wings.
Two wings are going right there.
So they say that they're using the language ahead of schedule, everything's going well.
We want.
Praying for an Indian summer.
Yeah, seriously.
That's what I'm saying.
If we.
I don't need the snow to show up anytime soon.
Oh my gosh, yeah.
That's cool.
Alright, good deal.
Um, we do. As far as the. You know, we talked some about, about continuing to value engineer and, and, uh. Between the mechanical, the mechanical VE and, uh. And also, we pulled the carpet bid out of the contract. We're, we're just kinda mixing and matching with Weston and Keith and Jason are keeping meticulous records on this, but. Um, between, between the carpet, we're gonna do a direct bid with, with Mohair, who does all our schools, we work with them directly anyway. And between those two, those two VE's. Where we've got enough to do the shed space to put that all back in. And we've got enough to do almost of the turf. I think that was the last time we talked as a board, those were the two major VE projects that, that, uh, we wanted to add back in as soon as we could, and it looks like we're pretty much there.
So parking lots still gravel though, right?
Um, some of it. But we, we're confident we can, we can get, I think it was just, I think it was just one or two of the smaller parking lots out by the athletic area was all it was.
Okay.
Like.
High school parking lot looks great.
Yeah.
I was on it today.
Did you just get resurfaced?
Uh-huh, and the lines, and the horseshoe and.
Yeah, and the lines. Yeah, so we're, we're gonna use that, we're trying to use that horseshoe as it was designed and they had started blocking people off from coming in there and.
Yes, they did.